Let's call today's Board of Trustees meeting to order at four P M. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Bilkowski.
Present.
Epic. McTomey. Nunley.
Here.
Ismo. Sheets.
Here.
Swanson.
Here.
Zibble.
Here. Thank you, everyone, for being here. If we could please stand for the pledge.
You forgot me.
Stanger.
I'm here. I'm sorry, I had my finger over your place.
No problem.
And we have Miss Peachmo as well. Okay, if we could please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Mr. Zibble, if you would please read the mission statement.
Certainly. Lake Tran is committed to providing quality public transportation services to all Lake County residents with special emphasis on meeting the transportation needs of seniors and people with disabilities.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Are there any public comments in the room today? Seeing none, is there, um, uh, next item is the approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the Lake Tran Board of Trustees Board Meeting Minutes of June twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three?
So moved.
Uh, motion made by Mr. Swanson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Zibble. Uh, Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
McTomey. Nunley.
Yes.
Ismo.
Abstain.
Sheets.
Here, yes.
Stanger.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Zibble.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Uh, at this time, is there a motion to enter into executive session to consider the employment promotion or compensation of a public employee or official pursuant to section one-twenty-one point twenty-two G one of the Ohio Revised Code?
Show moved.
Motion made by Ms. Stanger. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Peachmo. Uh, Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Nunley.
Yes.
Ismo.
Yes.
Sheets.
Yes.
Stanger.
Yes.
Swanson. Zibble.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Please let the record reflect, we're going into executive session at four oh-two P M. And we will invite our legal counsel and, uh, general manager to stay as well. Okay, thank you, everyone. We have reconvened at five oh-four P M. It looks like the next item on our agenda is the Information Technology Strategic Plan, which will be presented by the Faith Group. Mr. Capella, did you have any comments before going into the presentation?
Um, I'm gonna let them introduce themselves because they'll probably do it better than me, so take it away. Sure.
Absolutely. Oh, okay. Slide. How do we do these slide advancing?
Just push.
Point like that? Alright. So, uh, just by way of introduction, I'm Zach Farwig. I'm the principal in charge from Faith Group on this project. Uh, with me, I have, uh, Jason Wallace and Michael Yanko. Guys, don't introduce yourselves.
Yeah, I'm Jason Wallace. I've been the project manager for the I T strategic plan development.
I'm Michael Yanko with Faith Group. I'm the secure architecture lead. I specialize in I T master planning, secure network design, and integrated cybersecurity architecture.
Okay, so just a little bit of background on the firm. Uh, the first thing people always ask is why are we called Faith Group? Uh, the lady that founded the company's name is Faith, named it after herself. So, uh, we are Faith Group. We, so we are faith-based, but not in a religious kind of way, is the internal joke. Um, about a hundred and ten-person firm, we specialize in transportation and aviation, technology, consulting, and engineering. This is our space, where we live, what we do. Um, and for the past six months, we've been working with Lake Tran to develop this I T strategic plan. Do work all over the U S. Uh, it's sitting in front of you. We're based in Saint Louis, Missouri. That's where about half our staff comes out of. That's where Mike's based. Um, I'm actually in D C. I have our D C office and, uh, Jason's out of Florida. And here's some of the different, uh, technologies and verticals that we work in. Um, both, we both do both safety and security consulting, telecom, A V, I T, specialty systems, right? There's plenty of technology in the transit and transportation space that is only in this vertical. We have a whole commissioning group, um, and performance engineering. Uh, and we also do a fair amount of operations and safety consulting as well. So not only technical consulting, but, uh, work across developing concept of operations, safety risk assessments, doing I T strategic plans and looking at those impacts. So, uh, you know, multi-discipline firm focused in this space. So that's it. That's all talk about us. Uh, Jason's gonna take you through a little bit of the project. Just really quick, uh, we did send out the presentation and, uh, report beforehand. And just so we kind of know, everybody, how much you read it or not, did, did everybody have a chance to go through the, the report or at least the executive summary presentation? Do we have a fair baseline? I see nodding heads. It's okay if not. I've had plenty of clients who didn't read the report. Uh, so anyway, um, Jason will take you through a little bit of the background and then we'll get into the meat of the recommendations. Thanks, Zach. So what you see on the screen here are the four tasks that we primarily fo- focused on as we developed the strategic plan. We started with a project mobilization, moved into a stakeholder engagement phase where we had, uh, surveys sent out to riders, uh, sorry, drivers and your internal staff members. Um, we had multiple onsite, uh, stakeholder workshops, and that developed the stakeholder engagement report, which you probably found at the end of the packet that you received. Um, we moved into existing conditions where we looked at all the systems that were in place, um, what their condition was, um, their age, their architecture, and out of that, we developed the stakeholder, I'm sorry, the existing conditions report, which then followed that with a gap analysis, looking at industry trends and best practices. Um, the final task was the strategic plan development as well as the recommendations for both systems and staffing. This was the schedule. We kicked off early in, uh, January this year, and now we're sitting here in August. So we took approximately eight months to complete that. The surveys that we sent out to both the drivers and staff, uh, these were the popular comments that we received back and the trends, um, additional I T staffing, streamlined communications, uh, document management, uh, expansion of software capabilities, uh, data integration between systems, Wi-Fi coverage, remote connectivity, and then automation of manual processes. Those were kind of the big top eight that we heard frequently. The response rates, uh, that we received from staff was fifty-five percent. Uh, we sent those out, um, and the drivers is at twenty-nine percent, and we think that that's because they may not be as technically savvy as a lot of the staff, um, today, so they may not have been able to complete the surveys. I pulled a couple of questions out of the surveys here, so you can, uh, see an example. Um, the first one being about staffing as well. Uh, at Lake Tran, eighty-one percent of the responses said no, and we have comments coming up that you can review on that as well. Um, are there any software solutions, uh, that, uh, you don't have that you could use to improve the way you do your job? Um, major, big majority of people said they did not, which is around sixty-five percent. And then, uh, as far as the drivers, would you be interested in completing tasks electronically and self-service? And we had eighty-one percent of the twenty-six percent that responded say yes. So that's where we're at from a survey response standpoint. This is a graphic not intended to be read today, um, or readable. Uh, it's the staffing question, and within the stakeholder engagement report, you have the, all of the responses from all of the writers, drivers, and your staff members. Uh, so you can, uh, look at all of the comments for every question. And as we moved into the gap analysis, I referenced a couple of minutes ago, you'll see the, the department or area, um, on the left, and the gap rating, ratings, uh, one through five, um, across different, um, all of the systems that were assessed. And, uh, the right legend touch kind of shows what those colors mean. Uh, the dark red being nonexistent, it does not meet the needs. Uh, the bright green, um, exceeds now and in the future. Uh, the lowest score was in your administrative systems, and your highest score was in your operations and your communication systems. And both, uh, standard I T and cybersecurity fell right in the middle, uh, respectively at two-point-one and two-point-three. This, oh, this illustration, uh, kind of showcases all of the different areas that an I T organization is responsible for. Um, one, they're responsible for all of the buses, all thirty-seven of your large buses. We have a hundred, but a hundred-plus on-demand vans that they support all of the technology on. Uh, there are four, four telecom rooms, one of them being the primary data center in this building, and the addition of the Joga County, uh, telecom room. You've got your user support, uh, for seventy-five staff members, um, plus the twelve or so at Joga. And then you have any other project work, um, and execution that would be necessary. And the dark column right in the middle says your current support level is one. And based on a, uh, industry standard, I T support per number of users of fifty to one, um, we're using that as our calculation for how many staff are needed today. And so if you can see that the, uh, buses, uh, vans in the telecom infrastructure equate to approximately one user, all of the seventy-five staff members equates to, um, one I T resource, and then the projects that are in flight and being recommended equate to a third. Anything to add on that?
No, I would just stop to ask, you know, we're, we're covering, that was four months of work summarized in five minutes, roughly there. Oh.
On, um, were there any questions in the stakeholder feedback or gap analysis before we jump to the, the actual recommendations?
I got, I got one. On the user support on this graphic here, I think you said it was only administrative staff that was being supported. Do we not have drivers using technology on the buses and things like that where they would need some user support also?
Uh, if Mike, you want to talk to this in detail, but right now, all your drivers do not have, like, accounts.
Yeah, so when they say user support, they mean like more of a traditional, like, like you have email and website and all those things. The drivers do use technology, but they don't use it in the same way like a traditional office.
Okay.
So their, their analysis is based more on an office worker than a bus driver.
Thank you, Ben.
Any other questions?
Lot of circles on it. Could you go back to that page, please? That one. Does Lake Tran have adequate staffing? Um, is eighty-one percent the aggregate that of every staff person that you surveyed or interviewed?
Eighty-one percent of the responses that we received said no. And, uh, the counts for the actual number of surveys was on the previous slide. Right here. It looks like, uh, we, we received thirty-one responses out of approximately fifty-six.
So did that include everybody that works here, all the way down to the drivers?
We did a driver survey too, so. Two different surveys.
So the driver did not get in this. This is like administrative.
Correct.
And operations staff.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to understand where that was coming from. Cause I'm surprised with that number.
Yeah, hopefully that answered your questions. Were there any other questions?
Why wasn't the board included in your surveys?
We conducted this, typically, we don't include the board when we do these, uh, evaluations related to internal I T support needs for an organization. Um, you know, we're asking questions about day-to-day technology support, what you guys are receiving, level of service, things like that. And in our experience, board members don't have that level of feedback or engagement on a day-to-day basis.
I certainly don't, and I've been here twenty-two years. So. I would say you looked at the people and talked to the people who are using it every day.
Okay. So, uh, just kind of going top-down. So in any strategic plan, we have to start at a big picture, right? Understand a broader vision of where we're going and then work that into strategic recommendations. Our planning process that we put in place does the exact same thing. Um, what you see here is an overview of the, uh, technology visions put into a graphic that looks at the different bus stops along the way. So we have four key things that we're really looking at from a technology vision standpoint that we want to achieve as a part of this program. The first bus stopping on the left, which is achieving a base overall level of stability for the organization from a technology standpoint, moving forward into, uh, increasing the efficiency of the organization. Um, the next stop going up that line is in enhancing the overall resiliency, and not just resiliency from a, thinking of that from a stability standpoint, but your ability to scale services, manage risks, uh, be flexible in the way that you support changing needs of the organization. And the final stop being a long-term evolution, providing an innovative platform for the organization, right? Helping drive that innovation that we've heard from so many staff here at Lake Tran. It's so important to the organization of being an innovation leader in the transit space. Um, which then flows right into our next, uh, I'm changing my own slides now. Yep, uh, which slides next into our strategic theme. So this goes one step down, thinking about those big picture stops. What are those strategic themes that we found most of our recommendations and the feedback that we, uh, received fall into? And so those are seven categories you see on here. Asset and maintenance management being one, collaboration and communication, enterprise data management, intelligent technology, organizational administration, rider experience, and workforce optimization and administration. So all the individual project recommendations that you see as a part of our overall strategic plan fall into one of these seven buckets. It helps keep some organized. We understand kind of what we're doing. Ultimately, we're trying to drive improvement in these seven key strategic, uh, areas. And when I say that, here's the overall, uh, I T master plan roadmap. No tricks of formatting would have got this legible on one screen for this screen here, but ultimately, this is, uh, in the report that was provided out previously. This is all of the individual project recommendations spread, uh, through Q two of twenty-twenty-seven, um, aligned with those strategic themes. So in the bottom left, you can see the strategic themes, and those are then tagged to the different recommendations that we have throughout the master plan. So you can kind of see the flow, the different areas impacted, ensuring we're covering a wide basis of stakeholders. Um, also on this are the individual project costs. So this is the sequenced overall recommended master plan to the organization for the projects to implement. And to give an idea of priority, right? We slid most of the high priority items from a capital standpoint to the left. Those are the ones that we want to implement first, and this also builds on each other. If you were to review this master plan, you would see a lot of our upfront recommendations are, you know, developing and optimizing the network infrastructure here, implementing some core cybersecurity tools, uh, and foundational first-stop recommendations on that vision so that we have a solid platform that the recommendations then build on as we drive toward that innovative base. And this is the overall, uh, cost summary of the, uh, recommendations and roadmap for the next five years. So, uh, as you can see, this split by color, five-point-six million is the total for capital outlay for five years is recommended by the previous roadmap, uh, with, uh, color-coded by year. You can kind of see how that flows and, um, staying fairly steady with two thousand twenty-four, having the highest cost across all five years that we have outlined. Okay, and then the second half of our recommendations are on the I T staffing side. So that was the capital projects, and then this is the, uh, I T staffing and human capital evaluation. Jason, why don't you take back over for this? Sure. So for the I T staffing, we had, uh, thirty systems recommendations. We only have five recommendations for the I T staffing with, uh, the most important one being to develop a dedicated service desk. What that's gonna do is it's gonna alleviate, uh, the capacity of the current I T resource and move the day-to-day mundane support tasks to a new resource that can support that. Uh, the second one is to increase the I T skill sets and competencies. We feel like within the networking and infrastructure area, we see, uh, a good opportunity to bring in those skill sets into the organization. To support all of the systems that we have in place, the buses and the, uh, telecom rooms, because there's now four of those, plus all of the hardware on the buses. Those, that's the primary goal there. Um, establish a cybersecurity capability. This is gonna help, uh, mature the I T or the cybersecurity, um, capability within Lake Tran, and this can be a percentage of an external resource, and we're looking at approximately twenty-five percent of a resource that could be a, a contracted virtual C I S O that could help the maturity levels grow here at Lake Tran. Uh, adopt a training and development program. Uh, we feel that this is going to be an internal, uh, working team that is going to be led by an appointed individual that exists in the organization today to lay out those training and development opportunities for staff and, uh, even in the driver's area as well. Um, institute an innovation and emerging technology practice. Again, this would be kind of a internal working team, uh, that would be led by an appointed individual to focus on that, uh, technology innovation across the organization and help bring that into the forefront. We put together a proposed organizational chart here based on the current needs today of needing about two resources and the, uh, um, staffing recommendations that I just kind of covered. Uh, so you'll see in the blue, the I T support and help desk, um, is needed ASAP. Uh, the cybersecurity would come in the Q, in Q one of twenty-twenty-four at a, it, it says it would be less than a hundred percent of a resource, but I think it would be around twenty-five percent. Um, and then the networking and infrastructure engineer as a single role coming in first quarter of twenty-twenty-four, uh, with the database administrator and a data analyst being further out in Q one of twenty-twenty-six to support those, uh, business intelligence and analytic recommendations we've made in the systems area. I'll pause there and see if there's any questions.
I had two, maybe three. S A A S stands for?
I'm sorry?
What is it?
Sorry, I was.
Okay. All right.
You got it right. Yeah.
All right. Um, you had listed there the five-point-six-six-one million dollars. Uh, Ben, is this considered to be a new capital expenditure type thing, or is it, uh, something that is already kind of in the mix for the budget?
So those are the capital costs of the software they've recommended. Um, some of it is existing software that would be an upgrade cost. Some of it is new, so it's a mixture. So some of it.
We, we looking to spend the five-point-six million then?
Yeah, those are new costs.
Those are new costs, okay. Grants available for those?
Yeah, yes. I mean, yeah, some of them, you know, we may not even consider pursuing unless we had a grant for them. Others, we may say we should do this, but, um, generally, grants can be acquired to fund pretty much everything on that, on that list.
Okay. Then for the cybersecurity part of it, what, what are you seeing in the, uh, world today on what's happening with that? Is there a lot of attacks? Is there a lot of things that we need to be looking out for?
I'll let Michael jump in.
I'm not, yeah, this can be a short answer, I think. Don't that be a long one?
Cybersecurity dissertation.
Yeah, I'll keep it simple. Uh, just looking at.
Closer to the mic, please.
Just keeping it simple, uh, looking at the NIS cybersecurity framework. Um, essentially, the recommendations that are in the I T's treaty plan are to identify all the assets in your environment, improve your ability to prevent cyber attacks, detect, respond, and also recover. So.
Are they happening a lot? Is there a lot of attacks out there at this point in time, or is there?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Anything from supply chain attacks to ransomware attacks, and the idea is that we want to put the controls in place today, sure that that doesn't happen at here at Lake Tran.
Okay. Thanks.
And if it were to happen, you could recover from it. That's the second part of it. But I do want to just hit on one key point there, and Jason mentioned it a couple of times of it not being a one-hundred percent resource. We run into this a lot for many of our transit clients who, you know, they're not L A Metro, right? And they don't have room for a C I S O and a whole cybersecurity team. We've seen it be very successful that you have a partial contracted role for this. So it is someone focused on cybersecurity for the organization, focused on reducing that, uh, risk, but ultimately, you don't have to fund and hire a C I S O role, which in today's world is extremely hard to hire. Um, even if you have the budget for what that kind of salary command. So what, typically, because cybersecurity isn't a day-to-day activity, it's, uh, meaning it's not break fix. It's something you have to continually work on, as, uh, Mike identified, having a dedicated resource that's not a hundred percent can bring a ton of value to the organization to help push things forward without incurring a huge amount of cost.
Okay.
All right, I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and jump to the next slide. Um, these are the same roles that you just saw on the org chart on the previous slide. Uh, we did do some, um, investigative research in the Cleveland area to pull out the, uh, the salary ranges based on level of experience for each of these roles. Um, with your service desk technician being the most, uh, immediate, um, you can see what those, uh, entry-level role, intermediate-level role, and a senior-level role cost would be. Um, the same goes for the network and infrastructure as well as the database. Um, with the cybersecurity being an external role and potentially a third party, uh, you know, these costs could be slightly different, but based on, uh, what we've, uh, found in the Cleveland area, some of these numbers were actually rounded down slightly to, um, to hi- showcase the fact that the public entities pay slightly less wages than the private entity, the private industry. So we did take into account, um, that as well. And then based on those four roles that we've basically looked at, um, if you see the red at the bottom, that is your service desk technician, and it, this is by quarter, um, over the next four years. Uh, you'll see the cybersecurity green comes in there on the second bar, which would be first quarter. The network infrastructure engineer comes in as well as a full person. And then, uh, the database administrator doesn't come in until twenty-twenty-six. So you'll see that darker blue start to get introduced there in Q one of twenty-twenty-six. Um, based on the estimates of the projects that we are recommending over the next four years, uh, those top blue portions of the bar are the number of resources that would be needed to complete those projects over the, over time.
As in human resources?
Human, yes. So basically, that concludes our, uh, presentation, and we'll move into Q A, Q C. Um, we did put one slide in here as far as next steps, and that would be to hire the service desk technician, the full-time network infrastructure engineer, um, third-party cybersecurity resource, and then begin execution on the I T strategic plan recommendations. Anything to add? No, I mean, the rest of the slide deck is each individual recommendation, which I don't think we want to drag everybody through here. Uh, so I would just ask, you know, based on your review and our overview, what, what questions you may have, any projects or priorities, background analysis, we'd be happy to answer. I found that whenever there's quiet after a question, it either means we blew your socks off with the presentation, or you're just waiting for us to leave.
Since the Q and A period?
Yeah, please.
Well, real simple. Overall impression of the plan. It was done with no input from the board. I don't care if other companies don't do that. That should have been done. The Faith Group, I think, should have, well, I'm gonna go on. The plan left out some important facts that are presented below.
The plan left out some important facts that are presented below. Lake Tran pays a outside company called Cornerstone a monthly fee for additional user support. Network management, system security, including cybersecurity and backup. There's been no problem, we've been using them for, I think, almost twenty years, I'm not sure of that number. Second thing, Lake Tran pays multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars to trapeze. For the operational software and that includes the necessary data management. All the other software and hardware has been purchased from quality vendors that offer support and upgrades. That in many cases, Lake Tran already has bought. And more needed support can be purchased for relatively little extra money. As far as Jogger Transit is concerned, they've been using Jogger County IT Department for support for many years. There's no ain't, no need to stop now. So in conclusion, there's no need to hire additional employees for Lake Tran IT Department. With proper management and the already existing paid-for services. That Lake Tran employs, all recommendations from Faith Group can be accomplished as indicated above. Sorry, guys.
What was there a question in there, or was that, is that just your feedback?
Could you use your microphones, please?
Was there a specific question because we can comment on each of your comments?
You can comment all you want, but I will tell you, I've got sixty years' experience in IT. I've had my own business, I've worked with billion-dollar-a-year companies, offered them very strategic planning. And I was on executive committees for these companies, I know what I'm talking about, it's what I'm trying to tell you. Now you can comment all you want.
Okay. Well, uh, as far as Cornerstone, uh, the plan of attack there based on the service desk technician that we. Recommend hiring immediately is to over time transition that role from an outsourced uh. Unengaged party to a person that's permanently here to better support the staff. Uh, that would eliminate that cost.
Well, now hold on a second, that's the reason Tony was hired. And when when he was hired, I suggested, well, why don't we get rid of Corners? Oh, no, we still need them.
It is still a requirement, the the day-to-day ticket management uh, eats up a ton of Tony's time. Um, the whole purpose of bringing that as an internal resource is. That one point of contact will better understand all the systems here at Lake Tran. And provide a higher level of service to enable Tony to focus on some of these other programs, that's the the working thought behind it. I do understand your your feedback that the Cornerstone is supposed to be providing that service and we should have mentioned that. Our recommendation is to phase out Cornerstone in that role.
It speaks to that in the gap analysis that we pointed out, yeah.
It's a good point, we should have uh, discussed that more.
Um, if you look on the slide in front of you, uh, Cornerstone only helps with the user support. Tony has to do that full-time and support the data center. The two telecom rooms that are remote as well as the Jogger County Telecom Room. And a hundred moving data centers that are rolling around the 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 streets of Lake Tran.
You can get much of that support from the people you're already paying. I mean, hundreds of thousands of dollars in software support. And we don't, we can't have them take care of the uh, uh, any database management. That's ridiculous. Other other services are available if we need to have them, that don't cost what a full-time employee costs every year.
Sometimes consulting services like we've had are just not hitting the mark, especially for today's world. I for one am very concerned about cybersecurity. All transit systems are. And I would really appreciate, rather than. Kidding on these people we've hired to do this plan. But we proceed for more in-depth questions if anyone has them. To try to understand more about what they're recommending than shooting it down.
I can't hear her, so. No idea what you said.
I would add just one thing, we are in alignment also with your comment about trapeze and. The continued investment within the trapeze environment that you've already obviously spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on every year and a lot of capital costs too. Um, that is one of our core recommendations that uh, an upgrade be looked at for the trapeze environment and a unification of that. Program as well, because we do recognize that investment and uh. Understand its core to the business, so that is uh, that is actually one of the reasons twenty twenty-four is one of the more expensive years because. That's where we're tackling some of the trip spark and trapeze and overall CAD program here. So I I appreciate that feedback because I do uh. Feel we are in alignment with the kind of broader goal of utilizing what we have and not just trashing everything.
I don't think I'm going to share them with you. It's that simple, I. I've watched too much of this happen over the last seven years. And it's uh. We didn't even have internal IT people fifteen, twenty years ago. But I I asked in a meeting once or a board meeting, I said, you want to have a, an IT study? I said, well, you tell me what's wrong. I've asked that question half a dozen times in the one meeting and I couldn't get anybody to tell me anything that was wrong. We're a regional transit authority, we're not a manufacturing company or anything like that. This, this is easy, it should be. I mean, Microsoft has all kinds of tools you can get to manage the PCs and the laptops. And they should be used and understood and that. My company, I didn't have very many people, but we supported companies that had. Five hundred users, just a couple, you know, and they were all over the United States. And they were all, uh, I don't need to tell you what I've done. I already know what I've done and I'm looking at this and this is just way too much for the size of this organization. I'm talking about companies that were three hundred million, a billion dollars in sales. And I helped them run their uh, organization, or in one case for forty-five years. So I. I'm pretty much.
So Lane, um, if you don't mind, uh, a lot of research was put into this. Staffing element, looking at what is the best practices related to IT support in the industry. There are a lot of new technologies that have been introduced in the last decade that require. A lot more hands-on uh, support and care and feeding of the system to keep it functional. And so when you're looking at these buses and the vans, the technology on those buses doesn't support itself. Uh, you still have people going out to try to pull a a video surveillance footage from a a bus. After an incident when, you know, the, that should be automatically up to a system.
I'm not going to get into what. I've done over the years for people that uh, had not enough people in the IT. You train in somebody internal, I'm not, uh, this is, this is not a big deal, these are buses. I mean, you put fuel in them and get a driver, which I respect the drivers immensely, that's our uh, our uh. Connection to the outside world, but you don't need to have people on staff. That don't have any need, you don't have any need for. You train, train the trainer, that's been a thing for years. Uh, we didn't try that, no, I'm not gonna. I'm done.
Okay, let's open up the floor for other questions, did anyone have any other questions or comments for the faith group at this time?
Uh, gentlemen, I just wanted, I just wanted to offer a contrary viewpoint, I wanted to commend you, I thought that this was a very well-done. Presentation, uh, I read the entire strategic plan. Um, and I thought it was very well-done, very well-organized, and I commend you on all the work that you. That you put in over the last few months and regardless of what we ultimately end up doing with it. A whole separate discussion that doesn't need to be had right now. That doesn't take, that doesn't take away from the work that you guys produced, so I just wanted to put that out there and say thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
Um, I do have a question, and I probably missed it in the report. Uh, is there a similar-sized, similar system? That has worked along this sort of general plan that we might discuss with? That you could recommend we could communicate with? May- maybe it was in the plan and I missed it. But it would be interesting for us, I think, to have a discussion with somebody who's sort of gone through this kind of a process.
Sure, we could work on pulling together a a list, I mean, we, the plan we completed before this was for TCAT, which was in Ithaca. New York, supporting Thompson's County, and they also do the two universities in town, Cornell and Ithaca University, so a similar-sized. Transit organization, size from like an asset and buses standpoint, you have a lot more uh, on-demand ridership than they do, but um. So we we could certainly talk, uh, connect with them, that was a very recently completed plan, so they're not like down the path a few years yet. I think that might be something you'd be looking for more. Um, yeah, let me talk internally to a few other team members and see what else we could pull together, we'd be happy to do that.
Where are you going from here? I mean, is this the end of your involvement here by presenting this to us? Or is it part of your contract that, I'm going to call, apologies. But is it part of your contract that you guided the implementation or what is your role from here on out?
Yeah, so this is the end of our existing agreement with the organization. Um, so we provide the plan, this presentation, gather feedback. Uh, we don't have anything beyond this, we certainly help organizations uh, beyond this step if that's something that. Uh, you wanted to engage in, but it's uh. This is the end of our existing contract.
So you have outlined in greater detail, Ben, what each of these steps should include. So that Tony and other staff, Ben and so on, they can have a good guide to implement this.
Oh yeah, so just go ahead and jump forward a couple of slides here.
Donna, did you, did you see the report they sent?
I saw it, I unfortunately didn't have as much time as Kim and some of the others did to read every word, I skimmed through it.
No problem, I just wanted to make sure you received it.
Might be a good point of discussion in terms of going forward, how this might proceed.
Yeah, so we, for each one of those individual project recommendations, we've provided additional detail that each include. We'll go back to the, just on any of those, Jason, so that we we provide a problem statement, a description of the project, this is a. Yeah, well, the overscan is blocking a bunch of these, but whatever it is, it provides the ROM estimate. Um, key benefits of the project timeframe, so it is meant to be a project description sheet for the organization. So that you as an organization can pick this up, moving forward for our next stage of whatever the project requires, right? I I bring that up because some of these are large wholesale recommendations and I I think we have the smallest dollar value recommendation I've ever seen in a plan for two hundred dollars. Somewhere in here too, so it kind of depends on uh, the scale of what the next step may be. Um, but ultimately, this plan outlines all of that and the staff to go with them for for you to pick up. Um, and our first phase recommendation is also the mobilization recommendation, which provides some additional detail of kind of how to. Kick off this first uh, stage, I I can tell you that um. You know, thinking to an, and a non-transit client, but another smaller organization that we worked with of a similar kind of operating revenue. You know, the, they wanted to tackle some of the staffing recommendations first because that was what they found most important. And get those resources in place and they've now moved forward with uh, some of the capital, you know, project recommendations. It, taking this entire roadmap and just saying, okay, Tony, go do it. Uh, that's not the basis for it, right? There's some additional resources he would need to help execute on something like this, so it's all. That's a long answer to say it's all somewhat integrated together, the staffing needs to go with the capital projects. Um, and this is in Lake Tran's hands to decide how you want to execute. Uh, you know, ultimately, we can support you going forward or you can choose to go another direction on how you want to implement, that's up to you.
Any other questions or comments for the faith group?
I would just add, if anyone wants to go over this in any more detail or talk about any project specifically or just kind of get into it more, let me know. Like, we can set up a meeting and sit down with the plan and really talk through it, if there's anything you're you're interested in or questions you have or anything like that, just let me know, happy to. You know, go over it with you.
Okay, thank you very much for all your time, we greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, we appreciate it, it's been a really fun project working with your team here.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'll turn the meeting over to Lisa for the financial statements.
Okay, so um, I have the June two thousand twenty-three uh, statements. And so we're halfway through the year, um, nothing really is standing out. Um, it's just normal stuff, the new thing that I have introduced into this part of the slides will be for the Giaga Transit. And again, that's just a introduction and a a portion because they really didn't start until um. Was just a portion of June, they actually will be full-fledged for uh, July with all their expenses. Um, but right now, this is the Lake Tran piece and our total revenue so far year-to-date is at fifteen million eight hundred seventy-five thousand. With our expenses at around ten point four million. Um, and so far this year with the capital, this is just our local share, it's an approximate number through the end of June of what we spent of our local share. On our capital projects. Um, and if I turn to the next slide, kind of gives you a little more detail and the point that I'd like to highlight on this one. And I always go down through the middle column, two thousand twenty-three actual, because onto the left you have the budget and twenty-two actual. To kind of give you a perspective of where we are and we're somewhere in between and I'm still going to highlight and I keep saying this because two thousand twenty-two. If you just look at the revenue under the federal and state and you compare what you got in twenty-two versus what we got here. You can clearly see that we were greater in the revenue due to those pandemic grants. Um, when we look at two thousand and twenty-three for the revenue piece, this is a picture of like. Before pre-pandemic, this is where our normal is. So basically, the majority of our revenue is made up through the sales tax and our fares and miscellaneous at the one point eight million. We budgeted to be at one point five, so we're doing better. Um, and obviously, we're doing way better than twenty-two because we were still feeling the effects of that pandemic in twenty-two. So I would say that it's fair to say that in two thousand twenty-three, we are very close to on recovery of all of that. And being back to a normal state. If we go down to the expense piece, again, it's the same thing, we're right in between the two thousand three budget and the two thousand and twenty-two actual. And our total expenses are at the ten, ten million four sixty-five. Um, we're a little bit less than where we said we would be. Um, but there were some things that we're still putting into place that we're gonna, that we couldn't just do right on January. Um, so all is good there. And then I know that we're still working on on this, but I just kind of kept it the same. But we did change, it did change the title a little bit, Ben and I talked about it and again, it could still change again. The whole point of it is just to kind of give you an idea of where your cash is, what the minimum, which the board passed by resolution years ago to keep. In order to operate our, our uh, just to maintain our operating budget. And the prior, I just wanted, I do want to highlight though, the two thousand twenty-three and prior grants committed, those are things that you have obligated to. That you would not be able to ever get rid of that number, that's what we still owe and will be paying. And it's just that capital projects take a while to pay and they just don't all come out at the same time. And there's a lot more detail on the uh, capital plan that is also enclosed in here that you're welcome to look at. The two thousand and twenty-four through twenty-seven, I know when we talked before, one of the things that we went ahead and did was I. Took an automatically assumed eighty-twenty, which is what we talked about, now there's no guarantee of that in the twenty-four through the twenty-seven, but. That was the best case and that's what normally happens um, for those types of projects. But as we all know, capital changes and those things come and go, so they could go up and just depends on what our needs are going forward in the future. So.
So I put this.
Oh, sorry.
I I put that, oh, come back.
Okay.
I put this in here, so um, this is a sample of what that cash report may look like in the future. Um, I've been working, Gary has been very uh. Uh, uh, generous with his time to spend a lot of time reviewing this and diving into it a little deeper. Um, so we met for breakfast and have gone over this in detail, talked about all the nuance in it. And so I thought I would put in here where we're at with with what you may see in the future. Um, probably next month, I would think, but um, we are just kind of working through this based on um, the board's desire to have a. Um, probably next month, I would think, but um, we are just kind of working through this based on um, the board's desire to have a, a little better, simpler, but maybe a little more granular view of cash. And so I think we're close. Um, but uh, we are still kind of working on that uh behind the scenes.
Can I interject real quick?
Sure.
I'd love to hear some feedback from you guys. I mean, I, I may be taking this in a direction the rest of the board says, why are we doing that? So um, if you have any strongly held views, I'd like to hear them.
What's the definition for undesignated cash?
That is money that doesn't have any current stated documented purpose. There, it's hard to figure out different words for uncommitted or non, you know, so I'm happy to change the language, but that is, that's true sort of like savings that you don't have today, you don't have a purpose for.
Another way that, that, that was presented was available cash.
Yeah.
So, you know, on a, on a corporate stance, you might see that as available as opposed to undesignedated, but
See, as long as you get a good definition of what it is, everybody understands it, that's fine. And undesignedated, once you tell me what it is, I, I get it.
Could also call it net cash available or something like that, but you know, we, we can argue about the, the names.
Yeah, okay.
I li- I like it, Gary. I think, and then I like it. I think it's a lot clearer and I think I like how it breaks it down into different categories. For me, who's someone that, where that's, it's a little bit harder for me to understand, this helps me a lot. I like it. Thank you for putting in the time and joy, guys.
Well, I got a raise to do it.
Pro- probably what we'll do at the next meeting is spend a little bit extra time on it and, and go through and explain each individual section and what it means and kind of how, how the number gets there. Because there is, one of the challenges, and Gary and I have talked about this a lot, is there is some opinion in some of these numbers, not all of them. And the, the question ultimately is what is the best opinion to present to the board? Because there's options. So um, we'll talk about that more if you want to go into that more in between meetings, just let me know.
Okay, so this is just basically a summary of the capital plan that Andrea does, just to kind of give you an idea of what the federal commitments are by year, what the state portion and what our local portion is and kind of breaks it out over the five year. And.
Donna, did you have a question?
Okay, sorry. So um, on the capital, this is just the summary. Um, there's really nothing. It's pretty much stayed consistent. Um, I kind of noted where the high ones, obviously in two thousand twenty-three is the headquarters piece on the federal with the stars. And then again, I put in the assumption that everything is eighty-twenty in all those future years. Um, but those could change. Any questions on anything for Lake Tran? The next step will be STS. Okay, so this is STS. Again, it's just a summary. I will just uh refresh. We did talk about increasing rates. Uh, Matt and Ben kind of put something together on that. Uh, that was done and it started to take place in May and June. So the revenue piece should go up. Again, it's somewhere in between the budget and the actual. Um, for the total expenses, we can see that it's obviously being used more. And I'll go to the next slide for a little bit more detail. So again, it's still, everybody's using it more. A lot of the senior centers are it's not just senior centers, but the majority of the usage does come from our senior centers. I'm using these special transportation services to do special trips. And so I'll just highlight on the June piece on the expense, we're at about a hundred and five. That should probably even out. The total budget for this was around two hundred thousand uh for the whole year. So um, we should be on track to be pretty close to that. And then any questions for STS? This will be our new slides for the Giaga Transit. Again, Giaga wasn't a full month um for June, so it's just to kind of put it together to give us an idea similar to what we do. Um, so the board passed a budget and the budget piece for June was around a hundred and twenty-one thousand for the revenue. Operating was about one fifty. Um, as we go through the transition, we'll have to feel our way through on this one, just because their cash is going to be tighter than our cash uh based on their grants and when we get them. So.
Did we ever figure anything out with uh outstanding loan in Giaga?
Yes, they did. Ben worked with uh somebody at the county, Adrian, I believe it was, for the county commissioners.
Yeah, they're, everything is on track. They are supposed to be uh transferring the remaining balance to us on Thursday. So the, the final amount owed was identified and is being deducted from the cash they're transferring to us from Giaga Transit. So all of the, all of the loan is being paid for with Giaga Transit's existing cash dollars. So it's all finalized and unless something changes last minute, the, the remaining balance that is due to us other than their uh, there is twenty thousand dollars held over to the end of September for any outstanding uh benefit liability, but their, their main cash should be transferred to us um on August thirty-first uh without any issues.
And how much was the loan?
Uh, the remaining balance was two hundred and five thousand.
So is, based on the Giaga financials, that seems like a very material amount of money.
It's not a small amount. Um, they'll still have about two hundred thousand dollars in cash. So we're still in an okay place. You know, it would be desirable to have that number be a little higher. And so I've already talked to Joanna a couple of times about how we can move that number upwards in the future. Um, but it won't cause any immediate issues, well, or any really long-term issues.
So do they have the appropriate amount of operating reserves?
Uh, they don't have a set amount like we do. And so we will probably be looking at what the appropriate number to set for them is. It probably is still five months, but we need a little bit of time to better understand everything and, and kind of in, in, in working with us. So that's something that will come in the future.
Sorry, I don't intend to drill you with these questions, but does half of their cash balance going away change anything materially?
No. No. Not, it, 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 it's all about cash flow. And so um they're really, we don't, we've, we've spent a lot of time talking about it. We don't expect any issues. You know, we have to be much more mindful of how we spend it, which will, you know, require us some extra effort, but it should be, it should be fine. You know, we're always nervous. I mean, you know, you always have something weird happen, but.
You're retreating, Ben.
Well, I feel good about it. Joanna and I have had a lot of conversations about it and um we would prefer the number to be higher. We would, but we also think that it is best to have a clean separation and kind of end the, the, the relationship. Not that it was bad, but you know, it, it's better to get a clean slate and move forward from it than try and deal with that baggage. So even though we would prefer to have a higher balance in our mind, weighing out those options of being cleanly separated is better than having a little bit more in the bank account.
And I will add that a lot of their grants, we got grant money in July, so that will help in making that balance go a little bit higher. In addition, one of the things I'd like to highlight on here, because the board, when I had you guys pass the budget, we did it for a million and fifty for the balance of this year for um Giaga Transit. Lake Tran itself also received three hundred thousand dollars in a grant to help with the transition of this. And so to keep it appropriate, I felt it was more appropriate for the transition piece to show up because all that cost for transition has to do with Giaga. So those three hundred thousand dollars in, in uh that came to Lake Tran for this transition is also going to be included. So in, in the end, the total on this should not exceed the one million three hundred and fifty thousand dollars with the revenue offset to be able to, to handle that. With hopefully a little bit of a cash reserve, maybe not quite at the five months this first year, but after the transition, we'll work on that. The other thing too is um, they don't do the Medicaid as much as we do, and that was hoping to build that up because we do the Medicaid billing, which will also help bring that revenue back up as well.
Lisa, just what you said, does that mean that we had the three hundred thousand dollars in cash already?
We did. They gave all that to, they gave that piece to Lake Tran. And that piece will have to show, the revenue piece is to show under Lake Tran, but we will um, because we have to report it that way. But it will transition to cover the three hundred thousand that's going to show up. And there are some transition expenses, not a whole lot. Because this was really just a temporary, we were going to do it in July, but because of the cutoff and the way that things were going with the county, they, they took their, they started doing stuff in the middle of June, so.
Just unusual to get the cash instead of having to get reversed.
It came from the state, which.
Yeah, their, their explanation was like they didn't want, because there were new expenses to both agencies that weren't part of your normal plan. They didn't want us to have like an, an outlay of cash that we wouldn't normally plan for. So they just gave us cash. Which is, which is unusual.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
And, and I'll separate that out as we go through. It's just none of that showed up for this particular month for Jan, but I'll break it out more in July for you as well. And then basically, they also, uh Andrea put a capital plan piece together with Joanna and them, and this is their transitional or plan and they'll enhance it as we go forward for their, for the items. That's it for me.
Okay, any questions or comments for Lisa? Is there a motion to approve the June twenty twenty-three Lake Tran STS and Giaga Transit operating financial statements subject to audit and Lake Tran and Giaga Transit Capital Plan Review?
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Pishmo. Is there a second? Second by Ms. McNamee. Trudy, if you could call the roll.
McNamee. Nunley. Ismo.
Yes.
Sheets.
Yes.
Stanger.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Zippo.
Yes. Thank you, everyone. I will now turn the meeting over to Julia to talk about advertising.
Good evening. About every five years, we come to the board, sometimes sooner, but usually every five years to pass our contract for bus advertising. So we have been um selling advertising on our buses for uh twenty-seven years. Uh, usually bring in about eighty thousand dollars in annual revenue and our contractor for the last twenty-seven years has been Eagle Advertising. Eagle Advertising also manages all the bus advertising for Giaga as well. And it brings them in about seventeen thousand dollars annually. So in July, Andrea's support, we put out an RFP. Uh, we had about four vendors communicate with its interest. Um, and in the end, when the proposals were due on August eighth, we got one single proposal from Eagle Advertising, which is exactly the same thing that happened five years ago as well. So, so, oops, sorry. Sensible. So their uh advertising projections or their guaranteed revenue to Lake Tran um is fifty-four thousand dollars uh over the next five years. So it's our, per year. And then three thousand a year for Georgia County Transit. Um, what you're looking at here basically is each month they give us a forty-five hundred dollar guarantee. Um, again, they usually six overs. They usually bring in closer to eight to nine, um sometimes ten to twelve uh thousand a month. So they always um achieve their goal. Um, and then we usually have an additional bonus. Um, we've traditionally been about sixty-three percent of their ad sales, which nationwide is about, it's usually about a fifty-fifty. So they've always been very, you know, generous and it's been beneficial to Lake Tran. Um, and so that's their projections for the next five years. And then for Giaga County, slightly different, but it's a two hundred and fifty guarantee. Uh, they do a fifty-fifty split. I'm just thinking about, you know, there's such smaller business market out in Georgia County as well as the distance to travel um and to put the ads on for the installation costs. And so.
To be clear, that, go back there. That percentage is the percent of the sales we get to keep. So I want to make sure Julia communicate that, that is above average. Most transit systems are fifty-fifty. So we get sixty percent from Eagle Advertising with it going up a little bit over time. And that's mainly because they're con- they're still concerned about the impact of the pandemic. So it was sixty-three percent. And now they just are reducing it a little bit to kind of get their feet back under them after COVID.
One of the other reasons, oh, go ahead, Donna.
Who else um bid on this?
No one.
No one?
No one else bitted on it, correct?
Out of twenty-five proposals, we got.
Correct. We had communication with four vendors.
We didn't, we didn't get twenty-five proposals. We reached out to twenty-five vendors to try.
That's what I meant. Out of twenty-five, you said, we got zero?
We received one from Eagle Advertising.
It's pretty normal, Donna, just because um we're such a small market here in Lake County. Um, it's not like we're just gonna uh get advertising from Coca-Cola and national brands and Adidas like you see on the side of buses in a New York City market or even maybe a mid-market. So they're banging on doors of local businesses here in Lake County and local organizations putting on events. And you have to have those relationships. So there's a lot more footwork to securing the ad dollars.
Does the problem also continue that Eagle actually sells the ads where the others perceive it as just a print job? That's been a problem in the past. Has that continued?
I don't understand what you're saying, Donna.
Eagle Advertising goes out and sells the ad space.
Right.
Whereas a lot of people in the past, once they find out that they have to sell the ads and not just print the ads and put them on the bus, then they're not interested. So I'm curious if that's still the case, that they're just not equipped to bid on what we need them to do at all.
Well, the other, the other reason for that is that a lot of bigger places like Cleveland RTA, they don't outsource it like that. They have internal staff that sell ads and then their sign shop or their bo- body shop will do the printing. So it's a very niche market where you outsource all of it to a, a third party. And so there just aren't that many vendors that do it. And then Julia's point is, you get those local relationships are what produce the best revenue. So the vendors know that. They know that Dale has a relationship around the community and that he can sell.
Be able to go sell those ads.
Right.
All right, I just wanted.
Yeah, like Cleveland.
Listening to understand why we basically got one proposal.
Yeah, like Cleveland.
Reason was behind it.
And Cleveland has like two salespeople that, that sell ads. Is it two? I can't remember how many it is.
They actually have gone to outsourcing.
Oh, well, then I'm wrong.
So is Akron Metro.
Oh, well, I, I.
They use Lamar.
In the past.
Lamar or outs- or outside. Yeah, but that's all right. That's fine. Yeah, so they, it's, more people are outsourcing. Um, of the four vendors that communicated with us, um, I don't think ads, ads, none of them felt like they had that they would make enough money to put a person locally to sell the ads. And we're thinking about eighty thousand dollars with the re- revenue that we're making, hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars in total annual revenue. You know, when you add both cuts and so to hire somebody on the street to be selling that um. Maybe not enough dollars.
Just out of curiosity, uh, are there any limits or, or uh limits, I guess is the best word? And, and what advertising we accept?
Yes. In two thousand eighteen, we actually, the board passed an advertising policy. We haven't brought it back, but if you're interested in seeing it, we did include it in the RFP.
Thanks.
Okay, any other, did you have more, Julia?
No, the only thing, just a small mention is, um, one of the things we have noticed with the sales is uh that the competition, when there was Lake Health and UH in our neighborhoods, um, brought in a lot of ad revenue. And so that was one of the reasons why uh Dale Fellows, who's the, the principal over at Eagle Advertising, mentioned that you know, they're keeping that ad sales at fifty percent specifically in Java because Lake Health was buying a lot of ad spaces. And now that just UH is in the area, there's not as much ad being purchased. Um, we've also lost quite a significant amount from Lakeland Ad, Lakeland, they are used to be a lead advertiser for us and they've cut back some of their advertising um in the last year as well.
How about now that UH is in Lake County and Cleveland Clinic has a greater presence in Lake County?
Yeah, we have not received, we haven't done any ad work yet with Cleveland Clinic. I think it's coming.
Hopefully, they will use it too.
Any other questions?
Sir, motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one, authorizing the CEO or his designee to enter into a contract for three years plus two one-year options for the sale of interior and exterior advertising on Lake Tran and Giaga Transit buses and vans to Eagle Advertising.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Sheets. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Stanger. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
McNamee.
Yes.
Ismo.
Yes.
Sheets.
Yes.
Stanger.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Zippo.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Looks like we're gonna go to Keith.
Keith is off for personal reasons, so Andrea is gonna pinch hit for him in what is actually a simple concept, but is a confusing briefing paper.
All right, so every three to five years, we come to the board and ask. For approval to execute contracts for snow plowing at our various locations. This year does include. Joga Transit. You may have seen this slide before, but just as a friendly reminder about the different types of procurements that we do at Lake Tran. We have an invitation to bid, which is we evaluate. The, what is received based upon the lowest price of the responsive and responsible bidders. That is what the snow plowing procurement was. We evaluated based upon. The vendors pricing. We do a lot of proposals at Lake Tran. That is where we can evaluate vendors. Based upon not only price, but their capacity, ability and, you know, technical skill to do the work. And requests for qualifications are used only for architecture, architecture and engineering contracts, which this is not. So our. Snowplowing contracts expired at the end of the snowplow season earlier this year, so we are now back out to bid. To have those services. Bids were due on August tenth. And we received six total bids. One, we had to determine as non-responsive because it was submitted after the. Due date and time. So it was submitted late. Then important to note that vendors do not have to bid on all the properties because we want. People who, especially some of our more remote locations like Madison and now Giaga Transit. For locals in those areas to be able to. Secure contracts and not have to perform the work for the entire county. So. There will be five contracts. Potentially awarded. This chart lists the total five-year price. For snow plowing at each of the individual sites. So if you see like ninety-two thousand dollars and like, whoa, that's a lot. That is the total five-year price. So that is not the annual price, that it's over five years, which is the life of the contract. We have worked with. Three of the vendors previously, they previously performed the snow plowing at these sites. And then US Lawns is a new vendor to us. So it's always good to see some new blood participating in our procurements. And then this. Chart demonstrates the annual cost to Lake Tran for snow plowing services. So the lowest bid price at each site is listed. And then it's listed for the five years. Are there any questions about either of these two? Slides. I like this one better because I think it tells you like who won and at what site, but we, you know, if you have any questions.
If, if US Lawns is a new. Business to us, how do we know, how do you know that they will be able to handle, they've got sides, they've got half of the sites? How do you know that they'll be able to handle that, handle the work?
Um, so part of the like responsibility determination, you know, we make sure they're not like debarred from doing business. With Lake Tran. Because this isn't a proposal, we can't, you know, always evaluate like their ins and outs of their business. But, you know, we have had a conversation with them, letting them know that they're the apparent low bidder. And, you know, to make sure that they have read. The bid document and that they're able to do the work. So they have. Currently confirmed that.
Yeah, Keith kind of does a rundown with them to make sure that, you know, he reads the bid document. This is what you agreed to. These are the things you're gonna do. This. You know, he doesn't give them any kind of competitive edge, but he, he reminds them of what the requirements are of our document before we bring it here. So that we're not awarding it to somebody ultimately can't do the job.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, Donna makes, if they don't do it, then they are in breach of contract and we'll go back out and procure another vendor. We hope that doesn't happen.
Yeah.
That can happen before the end of the five-year contract?
It can. It has to. We, we have fired vendors from both landscaping and snow removal in the past.
Yeah, and you know, for example. Last year, you know, we increased the scope of snowplowing here at headquarters when we did the front walkway and everything. So. We canceled that contract because it wasn't fair to the current vendor to be able to do. More work for the same price that they had bid four years earlier. So these things happen on a five-year contract.
Are there set aside issues from minority contracts in these kinds of things?
Um, so we do have an annual disadvantaged business goal. We don't have a set aside. The rules are sticky on that. Because, you know, the FTA is a lot of kind of back and forth about. Being able to have a competitive environment, but then setting aside money for specific contractors. They do have small business set asides, which all of these. Firms meet that kind of requirement, but we don't have set asides for minority businesses. I do reach out to all the registered disadvantaged businesses as part of. Soliciting this procurement. I make sure they, if they have an email, I email them, let them know that this is happening. They also receive a letter.
Did you notice much difference from last year's pricing to this year's pricing?
Uh, no, we're, with the inclusion of Giaga Transit, we're right at the same price we anticipated.
That's good because they're out there gouging condo associations.
Okay, yeah. So, yeah, we got some good pricing.
Yeah, attempting to gouge.
Yeah. So is my recommendation that the board approved the resolution to authorize the CEO or his designee. To enter into and execute contracts for snow plowing.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-two authorizing the CEO or his designee. To enter into and execute agreements for snow plowing and related snow maintenance services at Lake Tran Properties.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Sheet, seconded by Ms. McNamee. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
McNamee. McNamee.
Yes.
Ismo.
Yes.
Sheets.
Yes.
Stanger.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Zippo.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. It looks like I'm gonna turn the meeting over to Ben with a side comment that maybe canceling the July meetings not the best choice.
I'll be quick. This is a motion to approve the purchase of minivans. We've talked about this quite a bit in the, in the past. Really, the biggest difference between our previous conversations and now is we expected to be requesting Honda or Toyota vans tonight. We learned in this process that you cannot acquire Honda or Toyota vehicles in the volume that we needed. Ten vehicles to them was sort of like this astronomical number that they'd never heard before. And so multiple vendors asked us if we could adjust and make sure we would accept a Chrysler Pacifica. The, the downside to that is that this is such a strange world. The Honda and Toyota vehicles. Meet by America because they are built in the US. The Chrysler Pacifica does not because it is built in Mexico. So this does not meet by America, which means we spend local dollars on it. But they came in at a sort of acceptable price. So we got two bids, one from Classic and one from Junction Auto Sales. They're both, you know, they're. Hundred and forty-nine or, yeah, a hundred and forty-nine dollars apart. So they're very close together. Uh, once we add all of the stuff that we add to vehicles, the total price goes up. And the, uh, these numbers you see right here, the radio, the tablet mount, cameras, graphics miscellaneous. Those are budget items. We probably will come in below those, but we're not. We haven't labeled vans before, so there's some unknown as far as the graphics go. The camera number, we haven't put cameras in a vehicle this small before, so that's a little bit of an unknown, but should, should be less than that. Those numbers wouldn't all be there every time in a regular bus either because the buses are replacements. So some of this equipment is reused from bus to bus, but because these are extension vans, we have to buy new for all of them. This is also a test of the tablet in the vehicle versus the Ranger. So we're excited for that. This is actually a very exciting procurement. To be able to have non-accessible vans is really unusual. And so it's not that we don't want to provide accessibility. It's that, you know, these are so much cheaper to purchase and maintain and even drive. So this should be a really great way to provide service to folks that don't need the accessible vehicle. They'll be able to use these. So. The total we are requesting tonight is for six hundred and sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. That includes the van and all those additional components that go on the van. Again, the amount we spend will probably be a little bit less than that. And very happy that the vendor is also a Lake County vendor, which is Chrysler, uh, classic Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram. So does anybody have any questions about the minivans?
Are. These going to be used for seniors at all?
A senior could ride in one, yes.
Um, what, where I'm going with this is. The Dodge Jeep Ram vehicles tend to have a higher seat height. I'm wondering if they're truly going to be accessible enough for some of our seniors.
It's an individual person question. I understand your concern. We did make sure that these have the captain's chairs versus the bench. So the. Isle is between the two seats, which pushes them closer to the road versus having an aisle beside them. So there is a possibility that we may have a customer that once they experience it might say, hey, this vehicle doesn't work for me. We track that in trapeze and if that person is challenged by that vehicle, it's flagged in the system so that they, just like if someone had a mobility need that that vehicle couldn't accommodate. We can flag it so they don't receive that vehicle on a regular basis.
Have you thought about in those instances, because some seniors just playing, I don't know what their hangup is. They don't want to use. Lake Tran because they don't want to be seen on the buses. I mean, my aunt was that way. So what can I say? In other cities, I've seen them keep small plastic stools. Where they can step up on that and then sit down on the seat in various vehicles that are not accessible. Would that might be a possibility if these became a problem?
If that was a challenge that we were presented with, sure, we could purchase plastic stools for people. That's not a heavy lift.
I really, I really hope this works to provide more accessibility to some of these seniors.
Yeah, I mean, keep in mind, you know, this, this will represent a little bit less than ten percent of the Dileride fleet or right around ten percent of the Dileride fleet. And only ten percent of the people that use Lake Tran have a stated mobility need in their file. And that doesn't mean that when the bus shows up, they don't request the lift or something like that, but. We shouldn't have any issues. We've tested this very thoroughly for years. Matt had buses that were classified as non-accessible on the road. So. We feel very confident with this as a pilot program. You know, we, we actually really, it's past the pilot program phase because we tested it with buses. But there's always nuance when you introduce some, something new. So if we. Find out something we didn't know, we'll, we'll adapt to it, but we'll definitely let you know as that goes on.
Well, hopefully, it may even attract some more seniors, but they feel like they're going in a car rather than. Something that's a little more alien to them. Because I know there's a lot more out there that could be helped by our services. So, good luck.
So as you pointed out in the briefing paper, said the only asterisk with doing these are they don't qualify for by America. So you can't use federal dollars. So is that correct? So you're losing out on the eighty-twenty. It's at a hundred percent local money.
It's a hundred percent local money.
Okay. Any other questions for Ben? Was there a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-three authorizing the CEO or his designee to enter into and execute a contract with. Classic Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram for the purchase of ten minivans at a cost not to exceed six hundred sixteen thousand five hundred dollars.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. McNamee. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Stanger. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
McNamee.
Yes.
Ismo.
Yes.
Sheets.
Yes.
Stanger.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Zippo.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. And it now looks like we're gonna talk about some applications here for grants.
Yes, so earlier this year. The board passed the routine resolution to apply for straight state grants for state fiscal year twenty twenty-four. And then in late July, ODOT came out and said, we're going to have. A grant cycle for next state fiscal year twenty twenty-five. And those grants, those grant applications are due on September eleventh. And that money won't be available until next June. So the reason ODOT is doing this is because they want to better align the transportation projects and grants. With the biennium budget. So the state passed the twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five biennium budget earlier this year. So ODOT already knows what funding is available to it for next state fiscal year. But that means that in order to successfully apply for funding. For this new grant cycle, I'm back today to all of you. Asking to approve our authority to apply for state grants for state fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Which will begin on July first of next year. As I've said previously, we have a lot of available grant programs. These are important to us. They help us. Perform capital projects by buses. And, you know, do. Pilot projects, planning studies. Lake Tran uses state grant funding a little bit differently than Giaga Transit, which I'll talk about now. And that's kind of the only new thing in this presentation is I want to talk a little bit about Giaga in that. Federal funding for rural transit agencies that, so it comes from the federal government is allocated to the state departments of transportation. And then the states pass out that money to rural agencies. ODOT also has the ability to provide state general revenue funding to rural agencies. And this money comes with no local match. So all federal funding has a local match requirement. And it's important to note that operating assistance that Giaga Transit receives. From the, from the federal grant programs must be matched at fifty percent. So unlike what we're familiar with with Lake Tran. We don't use. Grant dollars for operating, but Giaga Transit does. And all operating assistance has fifty percent local match. Everything else is the typical eighty-twenty. But this is the funding that operates Giaga Transit. This money is crucial for them to deliver service to Giaga County. So this is just a routine annual request. It just happens to come a little bit earlier than normal. But we are asking for approval of the attached resolution so that we can apply for statewide grants. For state fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Are there any questions?
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four authorizing the filing of applications. On behalf of Lake Tran and Giaga Transit with the Ohio Department of Transportation and any and all state agencies. For state fiscal year twenty twenty-five transportation grants for grants through the United States Department of Transportation, Federal Transit Administration. And State of Ohio laws and thereafter executing a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon project approval.
So moved.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Pismo, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. McNamee. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
McNamee?
Yes.
Pismo?
Yes.
Sheets?
What are we gonna say? No, of course.
Stanger?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Zibble.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. At this time, I will turn the meeting over to Ben for the six-month look ahead and the CEO report, which I've been advised are very short.
Um, I will go fast. Um, the six-month look ahead doesn't have any really earth-shaking things in it. Um, the the one thing I would like to draw your attention to as I kind of go through this very briefly is one of the first recommendations slash projects. That we were working on the same time as the consultants were was um an adjustment or change to the software. We use to schedule dialeride. So right now we use a product which is sold by Trap-Tee Trapeze called Pass. Trapeze is actually two companies. There are Trapeze and there are TripSpark. Um, we use a lot of TripSpark prod- products right now. They are. Usually less maintenance and less work. Uh, they still take a lot of work, but they're a little bit less than trapeze and they're usually cheaper. So we've been slowly moving a lot of our software to TripSpark from Trapeze. Still very high-quality software, does still does an excellent job. Pass. For for dialeride, Pass is a very old piece of software. It really hasn't been changed in twenty years. Um, you know, I know Lane has has commented to me lots of times about how much he loves Trapeze's products and Pass. And so uh Matt and his team spent about three months really doing a deep dive on a product called Novus from TripSpark. And there will be a quiz at the end of this, so you remember all these technical uh terms. Um, but at the end of that conclusion, really the best case for us is to switch from Pass to Novus. The public should notice no change. The the software is the public uses to schedule trips won't change. It's just the behind the scenes, the engine that powers it all will change. So our staff will have to change. Dispatch scheduling, customer service, all those folks will have to learn a new software. But at the end of it, the annual fee goes down by about sixty-one thousand dollars. So when you look at what their recommendations are in the IT plan, there are some some higher numbers, especially with staffing. Um, this at least helps to begin to pay for some of those things also. Sixty-one thousand dollars a year is a significant chunk of money. Um, and we are sort of excited to move to this product also, because it it better integrates with some of the stuff we have now. Um, so our intention is to to bring this to the board in October. There is a one-time fee, which is the thing we'd be talking about with the board, of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the transition. Um, which we'll probably be able to find some grants to pay for, but that's the sort of the one-time effort required um to make the move. There's some licensing changes, some other stuff in there, but um we're relatively excited that uh. Our s- it should be, you know, a a pretty good change internally.
So there will be no improvements in the software that customers can schedule with online?
Yeah, so the online tool that that we call Request a Ride is already a trappy or a TripSpark product. So it really doesn't change. Um, it integrates better with Novus than it does with Pass. But the cus- you won't, you won't see that on the customer end.
How about like the reminder calls? Is that gonna include?
Uh, it doesn't, it again, it's a separate system, so that there's no changes there.
It's separate from TripSpark or?
It's a separate product. So you you buy scheduling software, you buy website, you uh trip booking software, you buy phone notification software. You buy all these pieces separate. All of our current pieces are made by TripSpark. But our, the but the engine that runs it is made by Trapeze. So it will all work better together because it's all the same suite of things. But at the end, the phone, the the scheduling pieces, you the customers are using the phone and the internet. That piece of software doesn't change. So you shouldn't see any major changes. Better or worse from what you're doing now.
We could talk about that later.
Sounds like a plan.
From a passenger person.
November, you'll see the budget. Uh, we also have a fuel contract. If you have any questions about these, let me know. Most of these are routine. You guys have heard them before. Um, in December, we'll have a budget approval. Um, I also do in December have an org chart update. Um, we'll get into this in detail in some future meetings, but this has some of the recommendations from the IT plan in it. And two other things I want to just talk with the board about, but I really don't want to get into detail now. If you if you really want to get into detail about it, I'll be happy to talk offline about it, but um I think it's some important things to discuss. Um, in January, we'll have landscaping for all our sites, like we did snowplowing today, all the EEO plan. Um, right now, we don't have any items in February and March. So even though you just told me you didn't like canceling the July meeting, we may consider recommendations to cancel February or March meeting. If no items show up, we'll see. Um, and then we have the P TASP in April. Questions about the future coming coming at us? Seeing none, move on to my report real quick. Um, HQ, we're making good progress. They continue to tell us it's on schedule for the end of the year. Um, steel erection in the front has been completed. The floor has been poured. Um, furniture procurement is complete. They'll be ordering the furniture for phase one probably next week. Um, and as long as everything stays on schedule, like they are continuing to tell us it is. Uh, in January, the board, we'll actually meet in the new part of the building as this part will be under renovation. Um, we moved the construction camera from the front of the building to the back, so um I do have, oh, why didn't that slide there? To say, I did bring another one of these little forty-five second long uh time lapse things, just because I think they're kind of interesting and fun to watch. But this is, this is the changes from the last time you saw this video, so. It's amazing that sometimes you you wonder how construction workers get paid, because it doesn't look like they've done anything, but. Oh, it's. That's how it looks. I watched it a couple of times to make sure I was not seeing the wrong thing. Yeah. And then in a second, it'll hop back to behind the building um where they're doing footers, yeah, so. Now this is the view you've got, so you can see them moving footers along. Eventually, uh you know, we're not sure what we're going to do to kind of keep the live view going once they there are roofs over everything. But that's a bridge we'll cross when we get there, see where we can put the camera. Giaga Transit transition, so we we completed the bulk of the transition on July first. Um, they had buses on order when the transition started, so they have been, uh, the branding has been updated to look like this. So the the, you know, I I I think it was really important that as part of this process, we refresh the branding. Because it just reinforces that Giaga Transit is a separate thing. You know, this really communicates to the public that Giaga Transit is different. It's also here to stay. Um, it's not Lake Tran. And so this will help accomplish that. Um, we already talked about the loan a little bit, so I won't go over that a second time unless anybody has any questions. Um, for the strategic strategic planning retreat, um, you'll receive a full agenda soon. These are the topics that I have on there. Um, we'll do some wrap-up on the rules and regs discussion. Um, talk about org chart briefly, um, talk about any additional service the board likes to launch in twenty-four. And then also talk about the future of STS. And that that number three, I should categorize also is is a conversation about, you know, the the additional service is a result of the COVID money, basically. So we have twenty-two million dollars that we really has never been allocated to anything. So there should be a sort of caveat that that's that conversation is about additional service or anything else we want to do with that money. In the future. Um, the IT strategic plan, you know, we're all digesting it like all of you guys are. Um, there's a lot of projects in there that we have to really spend some time on and understand how we want to move them forward. Um, the Mars, there are some initial steps in that that we're kind of putting together and will bring to you in in smaller pieces as we go forward. But if any of you want to go over that plan in detail, please, please let me know. Um, two quick thing, two quick additional things. Uh, the Lake Erie College service did get delayed until the beginning of next year. Just because their their dorm isn't quite ready yet, um, but we are still moving forward with some changes to Route Five. Uh, Route Five has two loops, a north loop which services Fairport, a south loop which services Painesville. The south loop, the Painesville part, has always been sort of lower in productivity stats than the north loop. So we are adjusting it so that it's serving both Harvey High School and Lake Erie College. So with those two sort of anchors, we expect the route to have a little bit better ridership performance. So that change happens on September fifth. Um, that does mean it'll move away from a from some a residential neighborhood neighborhood in Painesville, so there there could be some residents concerned that they lost their bus service. Um, we haven't heard that from anybody yet. Um, mostly because ridership is low down there, so we hope it will become uh a a good positive change. But that that change does happen on uh September fifth. Um, lastly, uh, well, second to lastly, uh, commercial drivers license training. In this narrative, there are really two things, and these aren't in your your packet because they have happened sort of quickly. Um, the state slash federal government have mandated a new course be used for commercial drivers. Uh, training and therefore testing. So we used to do, um, there's three components to a commercial driver's license. There's a pre-trip, a skills test, and a road test. The skills test, they have changed the layout of the course so that it has gotten significantly larger. We used to do it all behind the building here without any major issues. They now require two hundred and eighty feet of straight line distance, which is a pretty long amount of space. And the only two properties we actually have that at are the Mentor Park and Ride and the Madison Park and Ride. Um, there are actually very few places in general that have this. Great Lakes Mall has this much space, Lakeland has this much space, but. Nobody likes people training on their properties. And so we have this space at the Madison Park and Ride with some small changes. In some of the landscape islands to be able to accommodate the bus. So CT Consultants is doing a review of what we think it might take to be able to do this at the Madison Park and Ride without, you know, with as as. Low a cost as possible, really. Um, but this is a significant amount of space. So that's something we're going to have to deal with and kind of figure out. It's kind of frustrating. It's nice to be able to do it behind the building. The drivers don't have to go very far to do it. So we're not thrilled with the idea that we have to go to the Madison Park and Ride, but unfortunately, when you do these repeated maneuvers over and over again in the same place. You also do wear the parking lot surface out pretty fast, so getting a partner to let us use their property is not a practical option. Because it destroys the asphalt too quickly. Um, so doing it on our own property is is the better solution. Um, secondly, uh, Commissioner Regovic has asked consistently, um, and Commissioner Plechnik has has talked to me about this also about. You know, we have a training department with two full-time employees that does a lot of CDL training. We train thirty to forty drivers a year. We do a a lot of training. We have a robust system. Um, other municipalities are having to send their employees overnight to different places, and it's been very high expense, very challenging logistics for them. So they've asked us to, what would it take for us to do training for our partners? So we're doing a little bit of a pilot project with the city of Willowick. We took uh Brandon and Otrip and everybody spent a lot of time in the legal world, making sure it could all work together. And the, we're going to train two employees for the city of Willowick for an hourly rate. And our trainers will train their employees how to dr- how to basically how to get a CDL as a pilot project. To see if it's a realistic thing for us to even be involved in. So we're going to see how it goes. Um, I'm I'm concerned, this could be one of those uncork the genie moments. Where all of a sudden the whole world wants us to train their employees. So I'm a little nervous about it, but. Um, it is really a problem for our whole community. There is no CDL training provider in Lake County. Um, it's hard to find places to send employees. The state has really cracked down on how you can train people. Um, there's a lot of nuance to the laws. We actually, Matt talked to the Ohio Department of Safety to make sure what we were doing was acceptable. We have it in writing that it is, so we'll see how this goes. If there's a way we can do it, and it doesn't hurt us, and it provides the funds to just to sort of backfill the trainer's time. Then maybe it's worth helping our 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 neighbors out. We need to kind of feel our way through it the first time and see how it goes, because it's. Might work well on paper and be a disaster in practice, but um there's been a lot of. This is one of the most commonly talked about things for me when I walk around at different activities, is you know, do you do CDL training? Do you do CDL training? So maybe. We certainly don't want to make that our core business, but we'll see. Um, last thing I want to go over, um, I had a conversation, I got called by the city of Willoughby uh last week. And went and had a meeting with Bob Fiala, uh, their uh council president about um sidewalks and. Uh, accessibility on State Route ninety-one. We have gotten complaints for a long time about the bus stop. At Wendy's and Walgreens there on the um eighty-four end of State Route ninety-one. We have a decent number of ridership there. The the stop isn't a, it it's rough if you're a pedestrian. It's it's, there's a lot of safety issues. There's a gentleman with a wheelchair that actually drives it in the driveline on State Route ninety-one, which is not safe by any stretch of the imagination. So the city is working on a sidewalk project, and luckily they reached out to us in advance to talk about how we can fit. Pat the shelters and bus stops and all that stuff into the project, so um there will be action items coming forward to the board. About some some work there. I don't know exactly what it's going to be yet, um, but there are a total of twelve bus stops on State Route ninety-one between. Um, eighty-four and Euclid Avenue. So there's quite a few bus stops. It's on Route Two, which is our second second busiest bus route. So it is an area that's important to us a- and providing good accessibility. Um, it it is critical. And we've gotten, since I've worked here, I've probably gotten at least two complaints a year for seven years. Um, some of them are from riders, some of them are from passerbys that see a rider waiting in an undesirable uh location. I got cussed out one day by a gentleman driving his car about how angry he was with us for not having a bench for a senior to sit at. So this is a location that has has got some visibility that I I'm excited is finally being addressed by the city. Lastly, uh, we have the Grant Tracker. We have added a Giaga section to it and a Lake Tran section to it. Um, it is grant season, so there's been lots of activity. If you have any questions about any of these individually, I'd be happy to answer them. There's nothing really earth-shaking on here. Most of it is routine uh applications and routine activity, but um, yeah. Sorry, that was a lot of talking at the end of a long meeting. I apologize.
Any questions or comments for Ben? Is there any old business in the room?
I forgot to take that off the PowerPoint slide, I'm sorry.
Uh, regarding new business now, um, at this time, is there a motion to approve annual compensation increases? On the first full pay of October for assistant directors of seven percent and directors of three percent?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Zibble, is there a second? Seconded by Ms. McNamee. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
McNamee?
Pismo?
Yes.
Sheets?
Yes.
Stanger?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Zibble.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, at this time, is there a motion to approve an annual compensation increase for our general manager of three percent?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Zibble, seconded by Ms. McNamee. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
McNamee? Pismo?
Yes.
Sheets?
Yes.
Stanger?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Zibble.
Yes.
Thank you. Is there any other new business in the room?
Yes, I'd like to bring up a point here. At the main meeting, uh, we decided after a long discussion there about regarding the rules and regulations about um. Our the spending limit that was placed upon uh the CEO in the in. In regards to uh how they were supposed to go about getting uh twenty-five thousand dollars or less or more. Contracts approved by the board. And keeping in spirit of that, I would like to make a motion to provide direction to the CEO to begin the R. The RFQ process for legal services for the Lake Tran, including the Board of Trustees. It's a motion to authorize Ben and CEO, the CEO to begin the RFQ process. For the legal services for Lake Tran, including the Board of Trustees.
Okay.
A contract to, contract expires on the thirty-first of December, and it takes three or four months to get it approved. And I'm thinking that there's um. Need for board input and also interviews, be involved with the interviews, so there's maybe a little bit longer period of time there.
Okay, so let's see if there is a second to that motion, and then we'll open the floor for discussion.
Yeah, is. Is is it, are you asking for a legal counsel to help us change the rules and regulations?
The current contract with our for our legal counsel expires on September thirty-first.
Okay.
So we need to have a new contract.
Oh, okay.
Presented, and in spirit of what we talked about in May and what our um procedures manual says, we need to have an RFQ go out.
Okay.
In regards to selecting a a an attorney or.
Right. So, okay, that makes sense. So, okay, that makes sense.
So I just wanted to get that, uh, process started.
I'll second it.
Okay. So a motion was made by Mr. Zibble, seconded by Ms. Stanger. Um, at this time, we'll open the floor for discussion. Mr. Zibble.
Well, um, again, the contract, the current contract expires on December 31st of, of this year.
Wait, what? The, I think Donna needs to know what the con, the current contract is. I think it's with Mr. Dines. So the contract with Mr. Dines, we need to do an RF, RFP, RFQ, I forget, process. Um, before we rehire him. And this is just to get the process started. The RFQ process, correct?
Correct.
It sounds like your motion is to request an RFP for legal services when Mr. Dine's contract comes to a conclusion on December 31st.
Right.
You're trying to authorize Ben to place an RFP, RFQ, sorry, using the terms completely incorrectly. Um,
It's just, it's, it's in the spirit of what we talked about in May that knowing that this contract is coming up, just wanted to make sure that we were getting, um, ahead of the process here and getting started on it. To authorize or request the CEO to begin the process of RFQs for legal services for Lake Tran and the Board of Trustees. You're welcome. Anybody else?
Just to be clear, are we, are we contracting with Mr. Dines directly or would Mr. Dines is firm?
Last contract is with Thrasher, Dinsmore and Dolan. Um, that's probably the way that they would propose again. But we're doing this process, you're opening it up to potentially other.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I got that. I just.
I thought this was the board hires legal. Well, we're hires everybody and Lake Tran pays everybody. So it's, it's part of the Lake Tran. I didn't think Ben had anything to do with it. It's my, what I'm trying to say. Well, he signed, he has to enter into the agreement and he has to pay him. So he has a lot of authority regarding this contract. So what is this for? Providing direction to the CEO to start the RFQ process so that we can get it done before the expiration of the current, uh, legal contract. Uh, we've done it in the past. In the past, it was, uh, it was done on RFQs. Last time, two years ago, it was not done by through an RFQ process. We had a lot of discussion at that point in time about doing that. So this is an attempt to, to make sure we're following the rules and regulations and the procurement processes. Well, not to put too fine a point on it, but without Ben issuing in our, or Ben, for lack of the organization, without the organization issuing an RFQ, yeah. There's no next step unless the board decided that they were going to, that we were going to somehow manage that process. Is that correct?
I mean, I don't think. Right? I mean, the only way to do this is just the traditional RFQ. Is, or am I missing something?
Through, through the rules and regulations and through the procurement process book that we have, procedures book, this would be the process to go through for, yeah, you're getting an RFQ for the legal service.
You're saying it better than I posed the question. I mean, there is no other process to do this other than to go through the RFQ.
Unless you decided you wanted to, to do something totally different like we did two years ago, but. I objected it, it two years ago too. Just wanted to get this straight.
Can I clarify the? I'll, I'll wait. I just want to make, I just want to make sure I know what you want an art. You say RFQ, RFP would be the appropriate vessel for this.
Our fee is proposal, which would be requiring a cost or yeah, a queue, really you're selecting based upon qualifications, which I think this falls better under and then the good, the fee could be negotiated. Are we allowed, if you want to, if you want to do a proposal, if this proposal is a better process or better terminology, I, I have no concerns with that.
With that case, maybe the board would just say not dictate the one in the motion and just say a, a competitive procurement process and because I don't, I'm concerned about our ability to use an RFQ.
Okay. So your help is appreciated.
I would keep it more vague if possible. So that we can make sure we have the right vessel.
You're in agreement?
Yeah, the, um, regulations are pretty strict in that. Um, a request for qualifications is only used for architecture and engineering services. Yes. Um, the federal regulations are pretty strict in that, uh, request for qualifications is like only used for, um, services leading to construction, so architecture, engineering typically. But, um, we wouldn't be using federal dollars to pay for this. So like the rules are a little that are not as strict, um, in what type of procurement is issued. So I think we could call it whatever, um, the board desires. I think we just say we start the procurement process for legal services and, you know,
Yeah.
to comment or to be finished by December. Whatever date.
December 31st.
Well, I, Chuck, I think what you're trying to get at, if I, if I understand this right, is really that um, this would not be something that would just be presented to us, say, choose A or choose B with no input from the board. We, we want the ability to be involved in that process. Is that now? That's what I'm assuming. Yeah. Okay. There would be some board involvement in the whether it's all reviewing the scope or reviewing the interviews or reviewing proposals, you know, doing the interviews. So it wouldn't be a, like the proposals that we've seen here tonight where we just simply say yes or no, it would be a, a direct board involvement. It'll be our choice, but I would assume that we would want to have involvement.
I think the answer is yes, the board would be involved. I do not want to be the one, I, I, you know, I will be a vessel, kind of like with the owner's rep. I would imagine similar process or, or, you know, in that case I had a vote, maybe this one I don't, I'm not sure, but.
So who would be doing the interviewing in this process?
Um, members of the board and staff, I would, I would think that some staff would be there just to make sure that the proper procedures are being followed.
Okay. So you would view the interview process as a combination of the board and the staff?
I would, I would think so, but if.
Um, so I believe we need a motion to amend your motion to changing the RFP RFQ language to competitive bid process?
Okay.
Procurement. Thank you. So is there a motion to amend the motion to competitive bid procurement?
Time to make that, or just competitive procurement?
So moved.
Competitive procurement.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Swanson. Okay. Is there any more discussion on the topic? I believe at this time we're okay to call a roll. Trudy, please call the roll.
Mac to me. Pismo.
Yes.
Sheets.
No.
Stanger.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Zibble.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Is there any other new business in the room today? Seeing none? At this time, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Trudy, can you please? Oh, is there a motion to adjourn? Yes, Mr. Zibble, second, Ms. Macnamie. Sorry, it's getting late. Um, Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Mac to me. Pismo.
Yes.
Sheets.
Why not?
Stanger.
Yes.
Swanson.
Zibble.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned at a record late 7:01 PM.